Summary. Yes. In this. Okay.
Well, that's what he said. See. I don't know if they have the actual higher risk. Good. It's easier to read than that.
The President.
Mr. Chair, we're live. You may proceed.
All right. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, one and all. I call to order this special meeting of the University of Minnesota Board of Regents. We have one item of business before us today, and that is review and action on the amendment to the resolution related to issuance of a century bond, of century bonds. Last month, we approved the issuance of a century bond with strong support from the board, but we couldn't have anticipated then the global events that would lead to such volatility in the bond market. I'm grateful to the administration for their scrutiny of the market and their agility in bringing forward these modifications today. I support these changes so that we can continue to pursue of this bond issuance with greater flexibility, given the state of the market. Senior Vice President Franz and Associate Vice President Volna will provide us with an overview of the details of their recommendation, but I understand it that First President Gable would like to provide some comments. President Gable.
Thank you, Chair Powell, Vice Chair Swigam, and members of the board. So as discussed at recent meetings, we seek to leverage the university's AA1 rating, outstanding creditworthiness, and strong capital financing and debt management program to advance innovative management, innovative financing programs to support long-term strategic objectives outlined in NPAC 2025. As you stated, Mr. Chair, in February, you all approved our recommendations to issue a century bond and use the proceeds to finance projects on our six-year plan. Since February, as we've all seen, there's been volatility in financial markets due to Federal Reserve rate increases and geopolitical uncertainty. But we're factoring this volatility into our planning for the bond sale, particularly in considering how the bonds will be priced. So prudence and good measure advises that we plan for various scenarios, and today we return to the board to request approval of a modified resolution from the one that you approved in February. So this modified resolution provides the administration additional tools to complete a successful bond offering, but I will turn it over to Senior Vice President Myron Franz and Associate Vice President Mike Volna to walk you through the details. So at this time, Mr. Chair, with your permission, I'll turn it over to them.
All right. Very good. Thank you, President Gable. Gentlemen, over to you. Please walk us through the proposed modifications.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, and President Gable. One of the critical hallmarks of managing financial institutions like the University of Minnesota is to be cognizant of market conditions, aware of financial opportunities, financial instruments, and to make sure that those two marry up and you go to the market with the right instrument at the right time. We're clearly here today about timing, and I just want to make one comment about my six years of experience of selling bonds for the state of Minnesota. And one of the fundamental principles I learned about the market was nobody knows what's going to happen the next day. And you have to always, you can have the best plans possible, and you should, and you should proceed with caution and utmost care, but you always have to respect and listen to your advisors, which we have great advisors in Barclays and Jenny Montgomery Scott, providing us great experience. We've got Associate Vice President Mike Volna and Director of Debt Management Carol Fleck providing us with great advice here. We have General Counsel Doug Peterson and Assistant General Counsel Ray Lynn Lee providing us with technical and legal assistance, and also Assistant Chief Operating Officer Janelle Brush. That team has been working tirelessly to make sure that we come to you with recommendations that make financial sense for the university and can be successful in this market. What I'm going to do is just briefly outline the four amendments to the previous resolution passed by this board, and then Associate Vice President Volna will kind of walk through the details. So if you, in your materials, you have a docket item summary, you have a overview of the amendment, and you also have the actual amendment to the resolution. In that docket item summary, you'll notice the first four points in the middle of the page. And briefly, what we're trying to do at this point is to be able to maintain our goal of issuing up to $500 million in the form of now either shorter-term bonds that would be priced at a lower interest rate and a target rate of 4.5% for the 100-year century bonds. We want to provide some flexibility to respond to the pricing differentials that we see in the market. As you know, the market factors, the market has changed not only because of the Fed, federal interest rate, but also because of the world economic situation that's taking place. And then number two, we want to replace the not-to-exceed fixed interest rate of 4.5% per annum with a target fixed interest rate of 4.5% per annum for any century bond issued, with the understanding that the final rate could exceed that target. But it will be our plan and planning in the pre-sale day, as Associate Vice President Volna will talk about, and we'll try to make sure and make the right determination before we enter the market. We also want to appoint Barclays as the lead underwriter and also be able to select more and more additional syndicate managers from the pool previously approved by the board to assist in this sale. And finally, we want to make sure that we have the flexibility to refinance, to refinance some of our existing debt that we have outstanding as a permissible use of this proceeds in addition to the use that we talked about with this board back in December and then later in February. And so with that, Mr. Chair, I'd ask that Assistant, Associate Vice President Mike Volna kind of walk us through the process.
Very good. Thank you, Senior Vice President Franz. Over to you, VP Volna.
Thank you very much, Chair Powell, members of the board, President Gable. Appreciate it very much. So as Senior Vice President Franz outlined, we have three, we have four amendments, three of them tied directly to the recommendations that we provided to you in the previous memo we sent, as well as the outline materials. The first be-it-resolved statement ties directly to the recommendation one, which was to provide us with additional flexibility to be able to sell some or all of the $500 million as shorter-duration bonds, in addition to keeping on the table the possibility of selling them, some or all of it, as a century bond. At the bottom of page two on the overview that you were provided, there's a table that shows three different scenarios on how this might look and how this actually affects our overall costs of financing. And so if you, if you notice, if you look at, let's say, issuing $300 million of century bonds for, let's say, 4.5%, and you're going to give us the flexibility to potentially issue 200 of that 500 million as shorter-duration 30-year bullet bonds, which in this example would have sold for about 3.6%, that gives us a very nice blended rate of 4.14%, which is very, very attractive and affordable. The original resolution did not give us the flexibility to pivot to that, and so it did sort of box us in in terms of our ability to respond to what the market is offering and is most affordable when we're out there. Just to put a finer point on that, today, there was another sale in the market. Washington University in St. Louis, which is a very highly-rated institution, private institution, heavy research institution, rated AAA by one of the rating agencies and AA+ by one of the others, sold $1 billion worth of debt, 500 million as century bonds and 500 million as 32-year bullet bonds. They got 3.524 on the 32-year bullet bonds, and they got 4.349 on the, on the century bonds. So the numbers that we quoted about a week ago actually are what the market is looking at right now. So giving us the ability to do that will give us a very attractive and affordable opportunity there. So that's recommendation one. Recommendation two ties directly to the second resolved item in the amended resolution, and this really just recognizes the fact that when we first started talking to you about this, the markets were very different, and a 4.5% cap at that time seemed eminently reasonable. And since then, we've seen the feds take pretty aggressive action, and we've seen a war between Russia and Ukraine that has introduced an enormous amount of volatility, particularly in the spread component of rates. And so if you look at what Washington University just sold today for, and you think about going into that market, under a not-to-exceed cap, it is possible that we could have gotten to the end of the day when we're selling and been unable to finish the deal because we could not violate the board's cap. My concern there would be it would do a lot of damage to the reputation of the university. If we went through a day of pricing, we got to the end, and then we decided that we were going to back out of the deal. There would be a lot of investors who would probably not think highly of us the next time we came to the market. So the target 4.5% interest rate really just is intended to recognize the fact that we will do a lot of due diligence the week before, the day before. We will make a go, no, no-go decision based on our best estimates, but things can happen, and we want to make sure that we balance that affordability number against maintaining the reputation of the institution in the markets. The third resolved clause in the amended resolution really provides us with some flexibility to add up to three additional underwriters. This is not really a statement on Barclays. Barclays is still the premier underwriter in, in the industry in terms of century bonds. They basically invented it. We have a lot of confidence and faith in them. Our advisors, though, have indicated that it is advantageous to us right now to consider adding some additional underwriters. It provides more broad marketing, both when we price and as well later on in the secondary market. So we just think that that's a smart move to do, and so the board has to authorize the appointment of underwriters, and that's what that, whereas our resolved clause provides. And then finally, that last be-it-resolved in the amended resolution really just provides us the ability to use some of these bond proceeds to affect refinancing. And that's important because our current capital financing process involves us building new buildings or taking on projects using short-term commercial paper. And then what we always do after the fact is, once we finish the project, we fix the amount at a long-term rate and, and essentially refinance the commercial paper. If we didn't have this in there, we actually could not refinance or take out our commercial paper and replace it with long-term debt. So this actually is an important factor now that we've sort of understood it, that we want to have in there. So those are the major elements of our recommendations in the resolution, and I'll stop there and see if anybody has any questions.
Mr. Chair, you're on mute.
Thank, thank you. You'd think I'd learned. Senior Vice President Franz, did you want to, did you want to make another comment?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to end by saying that the, we appreciate, first of all, the attention the board has given us, both in December and in February, and, and the many discussions we've had. We appreciate your focus on this today. We're coming to you with the, with our recommendation to support the president's recommendation here. We believe it's the right course of action, but simply because you authorize this action doesn't mean we will execute the sale. We will execute good judgment. We'll rely on our advisors. We'll make sure the market conditions are right and the, and the right instrument is, is offered at the right time. So there's a lot of work between now and when that will be issued, and I just want to make sure you realize that this is not a done deal. It's a done deal when the market says it's a done deal. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for, gents, thank you for that overview. And thank you for advancing, you know, these, these amendments, you know, in light of changing market conditions. I think clearly bringing this before the board is appropriate and timely oversight. I also want to thank our, the board office, Secretary Steves and his team, for, I know, worked closely with you and very diligently over the last several days to bring this into, you know, a very concise forum for the board. So before we turn to a discussion, I would like to have a motion before us. Is there a motion to approve the amendments to the resolution related to issuance of a century bond? So move. I hear a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you. All right. It has been moved and seconded, colleagues. Why don't we turn to our questions and discussions while we're waiting for hands to go up? I'll just, I just want to pop in a quick one. Gentlemen, assuming that, you know, if this goes forward today by the board, when exactly, when do you think we would go to the market?
Chair Powell, members of the board, if this is approved today, the timing will be that we will immediately start the public release of information that is typically required for a bond offering. Actually, we will start posting things tomorrow morning. Ratings would go out early next week, and we would be out in New York pricing our bonds the week after, so the week of April 11th.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Steve, so if you'll help me identify those with hands raised, who would like to ask questions.
Regent Swigam has a question.
Regent Swigam.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Vice President Franz and Vice President Volna. Thanks for your presentation on this. I am very, very good with the concept of century bonds, as we have spoken. And I'm, I'm very good with the flexibility that I see this resolution or amended resolution giving us. And, and I think I understand the, the reason for the timing that brings us to this amended resolution. All very, very good. Just a little anxious about the process, and I, and I would like you to give me some assurance, I guess, about when we can pull the plug or not. The way I see it, as you laid out the issuance of these bonds, we will go live in the morning at some time, some Tuesday morning or Wednesday morning or whatever it may be, we'll go live, and these bonds will be asking to the market to, to bring to us at a certain rate. And then we get back the rate that might be competitive in the afternoon, is what is laid out. And that we would then accept the rate, because not doing so would hurt our reputation. Whatever my reputation is, it's probably not going to hurt very much, but I just, I'd have a concern about that process. I think it would work well. I think the competition ought to take care of it in the bond issuance, but if I go into the bank in the morning, Mike, and want a bank loan for my, my agricultural property, yeah, I'm going to ask what the rate is right now. I'm not going to wait for them to get back to me in the afternoon, and then my reputation says I got to take whatever rate they give, they give me. I want, I want to make sure that there's a chance to pull the plug if those rates, I like the rates that Washington U got. I'm fine with that. But Mike, I don't want them coming back at 4.6 or 4.7 or 4.8 or whatever, you know, as it ratchets up, and our reputation as a university means we have to do it at that time. The process just gives me a little anxious moment. Mike, can you give me some assurance? Give me some comfort?
Chair Powell, Regent Swigam, in the overview, we provided you with a little bit of information about both how the process works, the day that we will be pricing, as well as the due diligence process that we will use the day before. And it is what we've always used when we've gone out and issued debt, and it is a process that almost all issuers use. And so what that involves is the day before that you plan to price, you will be looking at what's happening in the market. When I say you, I mean the university, the underwriters, our advisors, and so on. We'll be looking at what's been happening in the market that week. We'll be looking at what other issuers have priced that week. We'll be looking at where treasuries are, our treasury rates are. We'll be looking at comparable spreads. In addition, typically, what the underwriters do is they start building a book, which is the term they use for going out and starting to seek orders for our bonds. And that early indication the day before of what others are getting in the market will help us understand where we expect to come in and will help guide us to the right decision. So the day before, if it looks like our rates will come in, let's say, about where perhaps Washington University came in, we would make one decision, and it might be like they did, part century bond and part shorter-term bonds to give us that blended rate. The day before, if rates look dramatically different than we expected, we don't have to proceed. The amendments really just give us a little bit of cover in that if on the day of pricing, we've done all that due diligence, we started things, and something happens in the market, something happens in the economy that day that we did not expect that causes things to spike a little bit. We need the assurance that even though we've done the due diligence, we can finish and execute it. Now, if there was something terrible that would happen, I think, I think it would be very reasonable for us and all bond issuers to say, we're going to pause, we're going to stand now. Because, you know, let's say, I don't know what it would be, but let's say something happens that really has worldwide impact that day. I think that in that situation, no one's going to be faulted for standing now, and it's really, the concern I have is that if we get to the end of the day of pricing and we're just not, we just don't like the rate we got, we, we don't really have the ability to just walk away. And that, and that's the case for essentially all bond issuers. There is that, that volatility and that risk you, you have in the day that you're pricing those bonds.
Represent. Regent Swigam, does that, does that get at it?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, it gives me some comfort, and the process gives me some, I, I appreciate the due diligence that is done in preparation. I appreciate that. And certainly, the day before is important. The day of is even more important for me, and I just want to, you know, make sure that we don't, we get that chance to pull that plug at the last moment. If something extraordinary happens in the market, I don't want to be paying 5% for bonds, but if we get wash-use percentage, I'm very, very good. So I just wanted to explore the process with you, VP Volna.
And Regent Swigam, I think the flexibility that the resolution gives us allows us to say, even the day before, if it looks like it's close on a century bond, we might decide that we're very comfortable selling all 500 million as shorter duration and get the better rate. So it just gives us more options the day before and the day of, so we're really not locked into a bad decision.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Steves, who else do we have?
We have Regents Rocha and McMillan.
All right. Regent Rocha.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in that, the question from Regent Swigam was, was helpful, but, you know, I'm going back. And maybe, maybe I'm, I'm not understanding the concept, and, and obviously, we just voted for the, the issuance at a lower interest rate, and I, as I was going through this process, I was wondering to what extent I wasn't fully tracking how even that was working. Because, you know, whether it's 5% or 3.5%, I don't want to be paying any interest on money that's just sitting there. And to the extent that, you know, it was like 35 million a year if you issued the full amount. So what I, what I'm, and I'm, and again, there's probably some light bulb that needs to click on here for me to understand this, but so, so what I'm understanding happens with this money as we issue the bonds, and let's say hypothetically, it's the full amount, and let's say it's, it comes out around 4.5%. Yeah, how, so that money goes into the, the central bank, as we're talking about this internal bank, and then that money can't be, that's, it would still be subject to, to board approval authority based on our, our standards that are already in place. And, but, but when it's sitting there, we're paying 4.5% on it, again, under my hypothetical, whether we're using it or not. And if, I mean, if that's the case, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the intense pressure we will have to spend a billion dollars because we're paying interest on money that's sitting there. Now, if there was a way that we could then turn it into an investment that gives us a very safe and, you know, return higher than what we're paying, that maybe helps me a little bit, you know, it helps me feel more comfortable. But, so I apologize for my, my ignorance. You probably already answered this, but I, prior to voting for a very substantial issuance, if you could help me understand it, I would really appreciate it.
Thanks, Regent Rocha. Gentlemen, I think AVP Volna, is that, is that yours, or however you guys want to do that?
Chair Powell, I will be happy to answer that. Regent Rocha, thanks for the question. So you are correct that when we issue this money, we won't be able to immediately turn around and spend it out of an internal bank. If you recall, the strategy is that we really want to lock in low-interest rates to finance our six-year plan, and so we are essentially pre-funding the six-year plan. And if you, if you look at where we think rates will be going over the next two or three years, that makes a lot of sense because there's almost 100% certainty that bonds we might issue in three years for that part of this, part of the six-year plan will cost us more than they will cost today. So while we are holding the funds, once they have, the bonds have been issued, we will be investing them, and they will be earning income to offset the interest expense. We will be able to blend the bonds in with other outstanding bonds and with other internal loans that we've made to help offset the cost. And the most effective sort of ability to use them will be, once we get through investing them all in the six-year plan, they're fully being amortized and such. But in the meantime, they will not just be sitting there, and you're correct, you will have board oversight over how those funds are allocated to which projects.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Regent Rocha.
Thank you very, very much, Vice President Volna. That is very helpful, and it seemed to be consistent with what I understood from our, our last go-around. So with the six-year plan and assuming that, you know, obviously, it comes back to the board for the appropriate authorities and we grant it on, what, what will be the source of, of revenue to, to make the payments then, when the, when the funds are used for the six-year plan? Is it, is that coming through the state? I, again, I, this is probably a very ignorant question, but I'd rather, I'd rather know the answer than pretend that I know more than I do.
All right. AVP Volna.
Yes, Chair Powell, Regent Rocha, that is a very good question that, that actually goes back to one of the other elements in this overall capital financing strategy that we talked about. When we allocate these proceeds to projects, we will do so in a manner similar to the way we do it today. So when we build any new building or finance any major renovation or reconstruction project, the unit that benefits will have to have a repayment plan, and that will continue with this process. So if we use internal bond, internal bank funds, let's say, to finance a big capital addition at UMD, if, whether we use these funds or if we were to go out and issue addition at UMD, if, whether we use these funds, or if we were to go out and issue funds directly like we do today with a separate bond issuance, the unit has to repay us, and that's how they will finance our external debt cost on this, is through the repayment of both principal and interest to the central bank.
Yeah, hence, hence sort of the shorthand name of the program as an internal bank. I mean, the, the unit is repaying the principal and interest on the loan.
And, and Mr. Chair, if I may, just, just to be absolutely certain here, until the money is used in that way with the debt, with the identified source of repayment, when the money's sitting there, we will have the ability to invest, we're not going to be digging into our operations to cover the interest, we'll have other ways of covering the interest. Am I accurate in saying that?
Correct.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Regent Rocha. Regent McMillan. You may, you're muted, Dave, I think. While we wait for Regent McMillan, Mr. Steves, who else do we have on the list?
Mr. Chair, at this point, I don't think we have anyone else with their hand raised.
Can we, can we text Dave, or find out, is, do we, do we see him still on the screen, or have we lost him?
He is in the call, but he's not on video right now.
I would like to, Regent McMillan, if you can hear us, you are on mute, we would like to give you an opportunity to ask your question. We know you had your hand raised.
I believe he may be reconnecting to the call.
All right. We'll give him a few seconds to get back on, get back on board.
Mr. Chair, it's probably about forestry or mining. If there's an angle there, Mr. Volna, we can probably just preempt and answer.
So again, and Mr. Steve, so there are no other questions? Okay, we'll give him just a little bit more.
He is, I'm hearing that he's having some technical difficulties, and so that may be, he said to go ahead and proceed.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Regent McMillan. We're sorry we didn't get to your question. With, because there are no other questions, I would like to move to a vote. Because the majority of us are participating remotely, Mr. Steves, let's, we'll do this as a roll call, and so this is to approve the, the amendment to the resolution related to issuance of a century bond, as you've heard it described. Mr. Steves, will you please call the roll?
On the resolution, Regent Davenport.
Yes.
Regent Davenport votes yes. Regent Farnsworth.
Yes.
Regent Farnsworth votes yes. Regent Hipsh.
Yes.
Regent Hipsh votes yes. Regent Johnson.
Yes.
Regent Johnson votes yes. Regent Kanyanya.
Yes.
Regent Kanyanya votes yes. Regent Mayron.
Yes.
Regent Mayron votes yes. Regent McMillan. I believe Regent McMillan is still having some technical difficulties. Regent Rocha.
Yes.
Regent Rocha votes yes. Regent Swigum.
Yes.
Regent Swigum votes yes. Regent Tawirabe is absent. Regent Verhalen.
Yes.
Regent Verhalen votes yes. Chair Powell.
Yes.
Chair Powell votes yes. Mr. Chair, there are 10 in favor and two that are either absent or one is having technical difficulties.
All right. With 10 yes votes, the motion is approved. Thank you once again, everyone, for arranging things so that you could attend this special meeting today, really very much appreciated. There's no additional business before the Board of Regents today. This meeting is adjourned.